All right, now let's begin the Urbana City Council meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersox?
Here.
Mr. Garrig?
Yeah.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Smythe? Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
The first item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. We have May 18th, 2009, and a special meeting on May 26th. I did ask for a correction on the discussion on May 18th under petitions and communications when the citizens came to discuss the displacement of people to specify that that was in the city of Champaign. So was there a motion on the minutes?
Yes, as second.
Who was it?
Heather and Diane.
Diane.
Heather and Diane, okay. Any other discussion, additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Additions to the agenda? No additions? Okay, we're up to petitions and communications. I have two people. The first one is Gabe.
Good evening. Yes, I just want to tell a little story about when the building at 1507 East Washington was condemned. The reason why it was condemned was, you know, of course, you know, there was a bunch of crime in that area. You know, I was following the ordinance of Urbana and I rented to a bunch of criminals. And I decided one day to evict most of them. And after about five or six of them were evicted on the same day, they came back and destroyed several parts of the building, threw hypodermic needles in the hallway, threw garbage there, defecated in the hallway, and then they called the city inspector. So of course, the city inspector, they, you know, they talked to me and said, you know, we have to do what we have to do because, you know, there's nothing else we can do. But they gave me seven days to cure the problem, even though the problem was caused by the disgruntled elements that had been evicted. So what I did was I chose to have them condemn the building. I picked up a vacant structure permission and shut the building down. It was cheaper to do it that way than to have to evict them. Well, you know, I kept the buildings vacant for a year. Then after that, I've re-rented them. And if you talk to the police chief or to the police, it's an oasis of tranquility in the midst of a jungle where people get killed. You know, I actually went further and bought the Monacles building to make sure that there are no criminals coming in there. The reason why I'm saying this is, you know, the suggestion that when people are displaced, that the landlord should pay $2,000 per person. Then, once you evict somebody, he goes and destroys his apartment, calls the city, the unit is condemned, and he wants his $2,000, and I think it's for three months, $6,000. He's probably never seen $6,000 in his life before, and yet the landlord has to give him that. Well, if that were the situation, when I had the city condemn 1507, there would have been a lot of very rich criminals around. And what would have happened is the place would still have been plagued by those elements, and people would get killed, just like somebody got killed in Scottswood. I don't want that happening. And I think I've done what is right to keep that place. You know, you go there to 1507 East Washington, and for the first time, you see children playing outside. They don't have to fear gunshots and things like that. But to come up and say that it should be punitive when the landlord evicts somebody, because when you evict them, they can always come back, they know what the law is, you know? And I remember that time, you know, even Mayor Pressing told them that, you know, if you think you were illegally evicted, even though it was the city that condemned the building, you can sue. Nobody did, but I did get a call from somebody from the city, some people from the city of Urbana, who suggested there was a woman who stayed and bugged the hell out of the mayor. She wanted $200 to move. Well, the city said, "Well, you know, Gabe, why don't you just give her $200, let's get out of this." I said, "Well, why doesn't the city give her $200?" "Well, they say we don't have a program for that." "Well, why do I have a program for that?" "You know, because you're a landlord." So what I'm saying is that it really doesn't make any sense. And it reminds me of Hubert Humphrey, who several years ago, after politics, decided to start a bed and breakfast. Within a few years, it went bankrupt. And then he actually said, "You know what? If I had known that the same laws that I passed would lead to my bankruptcy, I probably would not have passed them." So I want you to understand that when people go into business, it's for profit, there are laws. The court interprets laws. You know, the city, there's no reason for the city to just pass a law that makes people want to punish their landlord when they have not done the right things. What will happen is every place again in that area would become like Scottswood and Woodstone. Again, I say you can ask the police chief, there's been no call there in the last two years. And I'm sure we're saving the city of Urbana some money by doing that. So please don't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Gabe?
Yes.
David. Well, I've been hearing this $2,000 figure, and I've been hearing this $2,000, and now a $2,000 a month figure, and I'm just wondering where it comes from?
Well, from Danielle, that was what the newspaper reported.
As I understand it, that $2,000 was from Champaign, and that was some total that was proposed, not per individual?
Well, you know, what she said, if I understand what she said, was that, well, she felt their pain. And therefore, the city of Urbana, of course, you can't say that the city of Champaign should pass that. They're too, you know, I think that they're too mindful of the right thing to do, you know? They don't, they know what business is, and they know the consequences of passing something like that. So I think she suggested, which I think you guys are going to debate next week, you know, about, you know, having that happen in Urbana. And, you know, from my experience, it will probably happen, you know? And what I'm saying is, I've been in this business long enough to know that when you evict people, especially people, the kinds of people that we have to rent to in Urbana, because you can't discriminate against anybody, even somebody that killed somebody, even though you can't let them live in your neighborhood, even students, you don't want them living near you, how much more killers, you know? We can't discriminate. Well, I have deliberately broken city ordinance several times, because I'm not going to rent to people that I'm scared of. And look at me, if I'm scared of them, I wonder what to, how you guys would feel. So that's, you know, I don't know if it makes sense to you, but if that's, you know, I hope I misunderstood what she said. And I hope I'm misunderstanding what the city is going to be talking about next week.
Aye. I think the figure of $2,000 a month, it would be certainly several times the rent that we're talking about.
Well, okay, well, okay, let's say it's even $100. Let's say it's $100, you know? If you evict somebody because he's not paid rent, you know, and then he destroys the unit, because they know how the system works, and then he calls the city, and the city says, you know, "We're going to condemn the unit." And then, you know, then you turn around and have to give him $100. Would you like to give him $100 after he's destroyed your unit?
I think that this is, it's a very hypothetical case. I think that most of the time that this sort of thing is intended for would not be anything nearly that bizarre.
Well, I've been in the business. Have you been in the business?
I have not been in the business.
Okay. I'm telling you from experience, you know? And even what Mr. Smythe told us once when we were talking about getting more inspectors, I'm sure that Mr. Smythe was not aware that some of the parents of those kids were, worked for the city of Champaign. And I did not even hear about the condemnation, I saw it on TV. They didn't even provide me with any letter as to the condemnation. So you have all of this, and then, of course, they wanted $25,000, you know, for damages. The judge threw it out. So, well, thank you.
Okay, Brandon?
Yeah, maybe just a quick question, Gabe, about this. I guess I wonder if you could differentiate between the situations where the tenant didn't pay rent and tore up the place versus the situations where a landlord, like in the case of the place in Champaign, you know, kept the power bill money and never sent it on to the power company?
Sure.
Like if we could craft a program that did differentiate, I mean, you know?
Yeah, I understand that.
A good landlord, as you know, will pay the power bill.
Yeah, that's perfectly, you know, that's perfectly okay. But I don't know where that number comes from, though. You know, their rent is not $2,000 a month.
Right.
You know? So I don't know whether, you know, it's logical that you give them their rent back if you've not paid the power bill, or you've not paid for water or something. That makes sense.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Esther Pat.
Hello, my name is Esther Pat. I live at 706 South Kohler Avenue. And I'll be back next week to respond to some of the things that Mr. Mosagi said tonight. But tonight, I'm here to talk about agenda item 4 under new business, the request for rezoning 714 West California from R2 to R7. The, in, actually, I actually can't remember whether it was 1990 or 1991, I think it was 1991, the city council amended the zoning ordinance to include the campus to downtown plan, which was a very careful plan that took a long time to develop. Charlie Smythe knows, because he was on the council at the time. And one of the key elements that's of interest to the people in West Urbana was the downzoning of a lot of properties to maintain the single-family nature of the neighborhood that was being eroded by a number of different types of uses of single-family homes. And south, from the south side of High Street down to Florida, and from the east side of UC over to Race, with the exception of a little bit of Race that's MOR district, it's all zoned R2, single-family. There are some legally non-conforming uses, actually, there are quite a few legally non-conforming uses in the area, but the whole idea was that nothing should be upzoned. And that is the main reason that I and a lot of people in the neighborhood are opposed to this proposal to rezone from R2 to R7. Now, I know the Webster's spent a lot of money, I don't know how much money, but it's evident just by looking at it, since I live only three blocks away, fixing up this house. And I understand why they want to get the most money they can out of it, but the loss to the neighborhood, if you approve this zoning, will be significant. Right around the corner from my house on the 700 block of Oregon Street was a house that a couple from Neighborville bought just two years ago, and they, it was not in good shape, they put a huge amount of money into it. I think they bought it for $186,000, and then last summer, put it on the market after they renovated it and put in a new garage and paved, new paving of the driveway, installed the air conditioning in the house, as well as fixing the whole thing up, and they put it on the market for $424,000. Well, they're not going to get that, especially at that location, so now they're renting rooms. If you grant a zoning change from R2 to R7 to the Webster's, why shouldn't you grant it to these people when they request it? Just up the street from me on Kohler, one block north of my home, is a house that's a duplex, and there have been some over occupancy issues with it in the last, I don't know, a few years ago, with them trying to treat it as a single-family home with more than four people. If you grant the zoning change for 714 California, why shouldn't you grant one, what they requested, so that they can have a rooming house? There have been over occupancy issues in single-family homes on the 700 block of Illinois Street, which is one block north of California, the 700 block of High Street. And I'm not saying that you're going to get a flood of hundreds, but I could think of seven properties within a few blocks of my home that would all request rezonings so that they can make their rooming houses rooming houses. And like the Webster's, they could point to a use that was before they ever bought the property. I know, I got a copy of a memo that the community development director signed in 1985, saying what the zoning use was of the property. The current owners did not own the property at the time, and the zoning use and zoning classification, well, it wasn't zoning use, the zoning classification has been changed since then, that was what the campus to downtown plan was all about. The Webster's said that the house was a duplex when they bought it. I don't see how the fact that it was a duplex when they bought it, they unduplexed it, which is why they're having the problem now, but they're not asking you to let them have a duplex again. A duplex would be a conditional use permit, and that would be requested zoning board of appeals. I don't see how the fact that it was a duplex when they bought it gives them a right to a rooming house, because something happened many years before. And I just want to tell you one more thing that I think maybe you all know, but I'm not sure. The owner, well, Howard Wakeland, who you all know, owns property at 807 West Main Street, and he bought it before the campus to downtown plan, so he was actually an owner before that. And it was zoned multifamily, it was downzoned to R2, and after there was a fire in the house, he requested a zoning change to, I think it was either R4 or R5. And the city denied it, because the city, the campus to downtown plan set these things as single-family, we're going to keep it a single-family. He sued the city of Urbana. And he said it was a taking, that he bought it when it was zoned multifamily, and he had a right to it. And he lost in court. And he appealed it to the appellate court. And he lost at the appellate court. Cities have a right to change the zoning of land, and the city had the right to adopt the campus to downtown plan as part of the zoning ordinance. Doing so was essential to maintain the single-family integrity of the neighborhood, and I encourage you to deny this request. Whatever it is that you want to do to accommodate the interests of these folks, if you want to, upzoning the lot is not the answer, because it's not just about 714 California, it's about the entire neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon?
Yeah, thanks, Esther. Along those lines, I understand your point that upzoning is a bad precedent to set, and I'm sure we'll get to discuss that. But I wonder if you've thought of any other creative alternative solutions, like have you heard of any cases, and I'll get to ask this question to a staff later, but have you heard of any cases where the city could give back a grandfathered use, or somehow restore the non-conforming status or a part of it that had been there? Some other solution short of jumping the whole way to R7?
You mean allowing an R7 use on land that's zoned R2 after it's been used as R2? So basically, like rezoning, but saying you're not rezoning?
Yeah, if the facts are questionable about whether the prior use had ever ceased.
Well, the facts are not questionable, I think your staff will answer that for you, that the Webster's bought the property in 1998. When they bought it, it had been zoned as R2 for at least seven years. And again, I want to remind you, the appellate court said that even if the owner did own it when the zoning was different, the city had the right to change it. So to argue that an owner prior to them had a different use, so that gives them some right, I don't see how that's how any land use issues work around here. I mean, the creative solution would be, and I don't know how the neighbors would feel about this, but would be for them to apply for a conditional use permit for it to be a duplex, and to convert, if they want to, you know, put more people in the house than a single-family home allows, and see if they're granted a duplex designation.
If there was a non-
But giving permission, if you want to give permission to the owner of a single-family home to have more than four emulated people, then you're going to have more than one owner requesting that.
If when they purchased it, there was a non-conforming use, a grandfathered use, at the time they purchased it, and then they did a rehab and lost the use?
But that wasn't, see, that's the confusion here. The use when they purchased it was duplex, they bought a duplex, and they unduplexed it, and that's how they lost their duplex. And so if they were coming to now saying, "We want a duplex back, because it was a duplex when we bought it, isn't it grandfathered, and it's a duplex?", well, then, but I'm sure your staff would tell them, "Oh, petition to the zoning board of appeals to get the duplex back." But they did not, they did not purchase a rooming house. The use of the property on the day of purchase was not rooming house, it was duplex. And if the people in it were handling it like a rooming house, I mean, there are lots of places, and that's the problem with the place up the street from me on Kohler, where it's a duplex, but then they'll advertise it in the paper, when they say advertise in the paper, Heron Craigslist, as a six-bedroom house. But then, if the city, then so, you know, I pointed out to city officials, "Hey, these people are advertising as a six-bedroom house, but it's really not, it's really a four-bedroom and a two-bedroom apartment, and a duplex." They just call it a six-bedroom house in an ad, because a group of six people might want to live there. Huntsinger has three, I think, duplexes in the neighborhood that they advertise as a group house, and then when the group comes, the group's got to split up into four go in this apartment, and four go in that apartment, but the actual structure itself is a duplex. Those happen not to be in the R2 zoning of Mr. Huntsingers, but that's-
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate that.
So there was not a rooming house use in 1998, it was a duplex. And what they lost in the rehab was the duplex.
The duplex, okay. Well, I have a lot more questions to ask other people to get these facts clear, but thank you for the analysis.
Heather?
Esther, what I'm hearing you say is that changing the zoning could possibly cause over occupancy in other homes in the area. When it comes to our rental registration, how could that happen now? I mean, I wasn't a big fan of the rental registration to begin with, but if we change the zoning, then it would be considered a rooming house, isn't that under the rental registration, or am I-
Everything's under rental registration. If you rent a room out in your house, it's under rental registration.
Right.
Yeah, what I'm saying isn't that, gee, there going to be all these illegal activities now? What I'm saying is, if I owned either of the rooming houses on Kohler in Illinois, or Kohler in Oregon, or maybe even that duplex on Kohler, and definitely one of the several single-family homes that have tried the illegal activity in the past, and I had hassle with the city, because they said I can only have four people, and then someone at 714 California can come in here and get you to change the R2 zoning to R7? I'm filing a petition to change my property to R7. That's what I'm saying is what's likely to happen, not illegal use, but other property owners are going to come at. If you open the door, and this door was shut in 1991, if you open that door to, okay, the city will consider allowing, changing an R2 zoning to an R7 zoning in this area for people who want to put more than four people in a house, this is not going to be the last request you get, because there are a lot of folks who have an interest in it, that's all I'm saying. So you have to think about, is that the policy you want to make?
Well, and I understand that. I guess the concern behind that, that I'm hearing, is over occupancy, which I believe would be covered by the rental registration. And so I don't think it would be an issue maybe like it would have been before the rental registration. That's what I was trying to get at.
Okay. Anything else? I just wanted to come and remind you about the court case that you won.
We know, it's a famous case.
It's a famous case.
Urbana versus Wakeland, or Wakeland versus Urbana?
Versus Urbana, right. If you could start with Wakeland versus Urbana. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, we'll move on to old business. Ordinance number 2009-05-053, an ordinance approving a text amendment to the zoning ordinance of the city of Urbana, amending Article 9 comprehensive sign regulations. And Robert Myers is here, a planner.
Hi, everyone. Wanted to provide an update from, presentation, excuse me, made at the May 18th city council meeting. And based on the, some input from that meeting, city staff is recommending a few modifications to address the issues that you brought up. And I thought I would just quickly go over the changes that are recommended and that are reflected actually in the ordinance attached as Exhibit A in your packet. First, the question was asked about, rather than just changing the maximum size of wall signs from 350 to 500 square feet, again, no more than 10 percent, regardless, no more than 10 percent of the wall area, what about just doing so in cases where the building is set back farther from the streets, in cases where they can't be seen as well? And so I think that that's, that is a good idea. And so city staff is recommending that that be added to the proposed ordinance. And we're recommending a distance of at least, setback at least 60 feet from the front property line. And second, the question was asked about landscaping for large signs, or for freestanding signs in general. And actually, for billboards, we currently do require landscaping around the base of billboards, in part because there's some large structural elements, such as the poles and buttresses, that can help, help provide, around the base, it provides a more aesthetic setting for those utility elements. And it does actually make sense to provide parity between the large freestanding signs and not billboards and billboards, so we're suggesting that we add some landscaping requirements for shopping center signs, for new shopping center signs. Although I, we do think, after thinking about this, that the smaller freestanding signs might pose, in some cases, problems, because there's tighter sites. Typically, the smaller signs are with smaller properties and narrower lots, and sometimes that it gets tight when you add in, like parking lot landscaping in the parking lot, and the et cetera, et cetera. But we are suggesting that if you add for shopping center signs. And then third, regarding lighting for signs, we're not recommending any changes to the attached ordinance, but we do have plans to come back to this body fairly quickly with some limits for lighting for electronic signs. What's interesting is, is just in the last, really, two months, the electronic signage industry has come up with an industry-wide standard for lighting for electronic signs. I spoke with a representative from Dacronics signage, and she actually recommended, I didn't even ask her to say this, but she said that, she recommended that local communities do place a cap on the limit, or limits on lighting from electronic signage, because she said, if people are not abusing it now, that there will be some people who do abuse that in the future, and they would, the signage industry wants to make sure that electronic signage continues to have a good name, and so that individuals who are manipulating the lighting levels of their own individual sign doesn't give electronic signage in general a bad name. So she's recommending that. With those changes, the city staff and the planning commission would like to recommend approval.
Charlie?
Robert, on that last item, because lighting is something that, you know, I've addressed a number of times before. Do we need an interim moratorium on lighting to go into effect more or less immediately until you actually come up with a new version, or are you going to have us one next week?
Sometime in the next, let's say, four weeks, I'll be presenting it to the planning commission. And I'm looking at presenting it at the next available planning commission meeting. So I believe that that's sufficient, because the number of sign permit requests that we get for electronic signage each year is actually not that large, and it's pretty periodic. So I think that would be fine until then.
Okay, well, if you would discuss it at a staff meeting tomorrow, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Take note of that.
Any other questions for Robert? David?
In the feedback you got from Bodine Signs, one of the things that they were interested in is, again, the idea that there's no physical reason that you can't have an electronic sign changed more quickly than it does. And they're suggesting a turnover rate of once every three seconds, and, which is only an order of, what, 60 compared to what we've got now? The limit now is a sign change-
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Yeah, three minutes.
Okay. So the- So the, I just wanted to make clear that the reason that their suggestion didn't make it into the, the actual text of, of the ordinance was because this was just too much of a change.
Right, a couple of things. One is that I think we've talked a lot about this issue with this body, with the Board of Zoning Appeals among city staff, and just the general public, and I think there does seem to be a community standard at this time for longer periods of, of time for changes. You know, several years ago, it was a much longer period, it might have been 24 hours or something, but we realized that there was a benefit for businesses to be able to, to have periodic sign changes to, for instance, they can have coffee specials in the morning and other specials in the evening, or something like that. Actually, Bodine Signs, if I recall right, they were looking at a one second, they were recommending a one-second change, and one of the reasons, other than a community standard about aesthetics and, and signage, is that there's something called, if I get it right, the name right, the Zeiger-Nick effect. That is, if you expect signage to change, if you have sequential messaging, and you have parts of a message, pieces of a message, one second here, the next part of the message, one second here, it, it causes you to stare longer. And with the longer stares, you also have a higher chance of accidents. So if you don't expect the sign message to, message to change, and you don't, well, really, the key is not to have sequential messages, so you don't say, you know, bread is on sale here tomorrow, if you expect that, you know, you'll, you'll, the stares that they've, that they've found through studies are, are longer, and, and there's more chance for accidents.
Okay, is there a motion? Brandon?
Second.
Okay, motion by Bowersox, seconded by Marlin. Any further discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know that Robert worked a long time on this.
Well, thank you.
Nice work.
Thank you.
Okay, reports of standing committees, committee of the whole, that was Heather.
First, we have ordinance number 2009-05-056, an ordinance requiring payment of a sanitary sewer service lateral connection fee relating to certain parcels, North Shore Drive, for the committee, I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Stevenson, seconded by Lewis. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Stevenson.
A motion approving the public arts program plan for the committee, I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Stevenson, seconded by Garrick. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries.
And we have the social service funding allocations from David Garrick, and I don't know that we have a, do we have a motion ready for tonight, or...
Well, I, I wanted to find out whether we were...
This is just a discussion?
I think, yeah, I think it was supposed to be just still a, are we still, what?
Yes.
Oh, the, okay, I see what we're doing.
Well, we know the total, though, right?
Yes, the, the, and that's what we're...
So we can keep the budget without the detail if we want.
Right, yeah, the $312,760.
So this would just be the funding, not the actual motion about where the money's going to? Is that what we're saying?
Well, originally, I thought when we met, we were looking at possibly having the motion and having it, but last year, it was around the same time as when the budget was approved, that this was also approved, so whatever council would like.
I was, I was planning on having the motion, but I realized that I actually hadn't gotten feedback from the mayor, and I'd like a, I'd like a chance to include her wisdom in this process. So the, there are two ways, I guess, we could do it, one of which is, I could move that the, with the allocations as they stand, and you could do a, a motion to amend.
I don't think I can do a motion, but I could give you my two cents worth.
Okay, let's, let's start with your two cents worth.
Okay. I didn't get the original listing, and then I was gone, so I apologize for that, but what I have is a request that we fund some summer interns from the Urbana schools. We worked with Barb Linder, who's with the mentoring program for Urbana schools, and we set up, we went to all the departments and asked them if they could use an intern for one of these students that is one of the mentees, and I went to a meeting at Carl that Lynn Barnes was, had about having interns for this program, and people were very positive. So we found three part-time internships for this summer, ones in Public Works and two are in the Fire Department. We didn't have the funding available, and then we thought, aha, the Champagne Consortium has some money, and we thought we had the problem solved, but there was a snag that developed, a deadline was missed inadvertently by Barb, just lack of communication, I think, and I have the details here, but to make a long story short, we have put in a lot of effort to identify the students, the three students, and also the internships, and I think there's a real need for job training for Urbana students, so I am requesting that we come up with $4,000 from the social service funding by making some small cuts from programs which don't serve 100% Urbana people. So I have a list here, which I can hand out to you all. You want to just give three in this direction? This, this is the second item on there, so hold off on the big news until I get to that later, if you would.
Could I be recognized?
Just cut $200 from application number three, which only has 35% Urbana residents, and it brings the allocation down to the council average of recommended numbers. $450 from Family Services First Call for Help, again, only 31% Urbana, it brings the allocation to the average. That's what all of these things do. $2,000 from Family Service Home Care, which is 55% Urbana residents. $400 from Habitat for Humanity, which is 40% Urbana. $100 from Prairie Center Health Systems, only 21% Urbana. $1,200 from Champagne, Urbana Champagne Independent Media Center, which is 75% Urbana, but this brings it down to the recommendation of the council average. $1,500 from Champagne County Healthcare Consumers, which is half Urbana, again, brings it closer to the council recommended average. And then finally, $1,000 from the Salvation Army Stepping Stone Shelter, which is only 30% Urbana residents, again, bringing it to the council average, which is a total reallocation of $6,850. My request would be to use $4,000 of that for interns at the city of Urbana, and use $2,850 to raise the Urbana Park District scholarships for summer camp, and that, that's 100% Urbana students. And I've got the details, Cecilia Clark provided the details on what these interns would do. So I, I think it's, it's a way of kind of giving a little bit more money to some younger people in the community this summer.
Being, being new at this, I just, I'm still not clear on the procedure on items 13 and 31, if, if there's a majority of the council recommend no funding for something, does that mean that it just zeroes out funding for that agency total?
I, I think that David has a chart that has his recommendations, and I don't think there was anything for 31. Is that correct?
Well, my question is, what, if, if it zeroes it out, what happens to the funds that we had, that the rest of us had allocated, not knowing?
Oh, well, I think he just averaged them all, yeah.
But the, the spreadsheet that I sent out last Friday, in some cases, or I had, I had taken this money and reallocated it to other programs proportionally, so that, that column still did add up to the 312, 760, I think it was. So it was, it was reallocated to other programs, in, in most cases, bringing them up to, in, bringing them up to the average. The, the thing is that a few, a few people frankly over-allocated the money a little bit, so just going by averages gave you something that was bigger than our grand total, so this was able to, to get us to, to our actual grand total of 712, or, excuse me, 312, 760. That, that explain it, or?
I'm not sure I can.
Really?
Okay.
Did, did you allocate Diane's, you took out the money that she gave to one thing that wasn't recovered, and you spread it proportionally among her other choices, is that what you did?
Well, no, what, what I did was, I, I recognized that, that, okay, and in the, in the first spreadsheet, the, the places where we did not have a majority supporting the, the allocations, I went with average, even though that was averaging in four zeros. On the second lap, when I was told that, oh, by the way, that's not how it works, I, I zeroed those two allocations, and then spread the rest among the, the, the other allocations. Not specifically keyed off of your proportion, but off of the average proportion of all, all seven.
I was gonna say, that would be the source of... No, no, it all adds up.
Okay, 312, 760.
Charlie?
Let me clarify. Let me clarify.
Charlie?
Well, no, I was, I was just gonna suggest that if David has the time to incorporate the mayor's numbers into here, present the final set of numbers, that we take it up to committee briefly next week, and, and have a final, you know, the final resolution at that time with all the wording, ready to go, and that gives us a chance to review, and Diane can review her numbers and, and allocations again, and, and see if she's in agreement. You know, that way we work through all that. And I recognize that the mayor's done a lot of work to, to go through all these numbers and make it work out, so, and they, they seem very reasonable, but I wanna, I wanna go back and see the spreadsheet and, and see if I agree.
You're making a motion?
Well, yeah, my motion would be to send this to committee, and, on the, on the assumption that, that David can, can work through that.
Can I have, can I, can I be recognized before we...
Okay, go ahead.
Kelly, could we motion and, or could we, since we're wanting to approve the annual budget, can we approve the funding and send the allocations to committee next week to approve the allocation? So we're still approving the funding, but we're not approving the allocations tonight. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes. So, so, because it needs to be done with the budget, correct?
It has in the past, I mean, so, that's, that's usually what, what has been the last several years, is that it's, at the same time as the budget, that it's been approved.
I'm not sure I'm ready to approve the budget, I'll be there.
Yeah, we have the motion to approve the budget, the ordinance to approve the budget.
Yeah, but I may not want to, you know, I'm not sure everybody was ready to do that tonight.
Okay, well, they might not be, but...
That's all we got.
We have a motion by Charlie, seconded by Robert, to put off the allocation to the next committee of the whole. Is that correct?
And what I'll have ready for next week is a final spreadsheet that I'll make sure that everyone has a copy of. I'll double-check your email address to see whether or not I sent yours into the ozone, and also with the new modifications from the mayor.
Brandon?
And David, if you could, for transparency, we should, if you send it to Kelly in enough time that it gets in the packet, so maybe by Wednesday or something, even if it's just a simplified version, it doesn't have to be so huge, but something that could be printed and distributed to list at least your motion of what we would allocate to each agency, I think it'd be good, making it in the packet would make sure everyone here sees it, and that the public could see it, too.
Makes sense to me.
Okay.
I just had a question. Besides Charlie, is there anyone else who's not ready to approve the budget tonight? Because that's, is...
Yeah, we can approve the budget if we want, but that's a separate issue. You don't have to have the allocation spelled out, because we're voting on the 312, whatever, $1,000.
Okay.
The budget does not spell out the allocation. It just has the total. Anything else on this? All those in favor deferring this until the next meeting of the committee of the whole, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you. I don't believe we have any special committees. Reports of officers. I would like to tell you some very good news. I'll be first, because this is such good news. Senator Ferrex called me this afternoon to let me know that we will be receiving state funding for two major highway projects. $5 million for Olympian Drive, that's what we requested jointly with Champagne Savoy and Champagne County, and this is a long-term project that will require another $22 million in federal funds. The initial state funding will allow the project to proceed with land acquisition and engineering. And my personal favorite, $2.5 million for Illinois 130, which is what we requested to meet the state requirements for the Menards Development. So really, that's great. In addition, if that wasn't good enough, he also got $400,000 for the Urbana Park District. So yay for Senator Ferrex.
Yes, but was this before or after last night's...
He called me this afternoon, so it's after last night.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's good. Any other reports of officers? Tom Carino.
Evening. Everyone should have received an electronic copy of this month's economic development report. Just to highlight some items, a number of events this month, there was a groundbreaking for Crystal View Town Homes in May. That was the most construction I had ever seen at a groundbreaking. There was an awful lot of construction going on at the groundbreaking, so it was a great event. Also, there was a, a opening of 901 West University, which is the building at the southwest corner of University and Lincoln, a very nice building there. There was also a dedication this past Saturday for the Chinese Goose Plaque, a small ceremony just outside Crystal Lake Park. Staff also worked on a, the first art at the market workshop of the season, which was just this past Saturday, related to, it was a ceramics workshop. Also, this month, there was, or just starting on May 30th, running through June 7th, is the Stone Creek Builders Spectacular, which is approximately, approximately six homes that are open to the public for viewing, and again, that's May 30th through June 7th. And then just to highlight some projects, Philo Road Beautification Project is ongoing. The new Burger King on Philo Road is actually supposed to be open this week, so that's exciting. Facade work continues on Sunny Crest Mall, and there is a new restaurant tenant there called La Fiesta in the former Margarita space. Heartland Bank on Philo Road is now open. Chris Creek is working to finalize his commercial building and is working with several tenants there. And then also, two new tenants at The Pines, a children's clothing and consignment shop, as well as a new wine store at The Pines. Those are both, have been announced and don't have opening dates, but they're on their way. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Charlie?
Yeah, I had a chance to bicycle along Philo Road last night. I really liked the, the, the work that's being done, the beautification looks really very good, and sp, you know, it's brand new, yet it still looks very good, and I appreciate how fast it's going. And I wanted everyone to note the pedestrian full cutoff lights that are along there that look great. And to note the contrast between those, you know, doing lighting properly, and, and the glare bombs that have been placed around the new Burnham Building in Champagne, which cause drivers passing by a considerable amount of discomfort as they, as they drive through there. So I'm, I'm real worried about the glare that those are creating, and the number of pedestrians in that area, so I, I think those are serious issues, and so... And so, just wanna point out that lighting can be done nicely, and energy conscious, and to be good-looking, too, and Philo Road meets those three criteria. Second question for Tom, is, you know, you talk about parking in here, we keep talking about parking recommendations that are coming, can somebody please give me a date when we're gonna see those in committee? Next week, three weeks from now, sometime in July? Somebody pick a date, because I'd really like to get those parking things done. I'm not sure, but we'll certainly look into it and get an answer to you.
I've received a lot of compliments on Philo Road as well. People really like it, so it's great. Heather?
Yeah, I have several constituents who have called and said, Philo Road looks great, and they said they've never seen a nicer Burger King. And if my mind, if my eyes weren't playing tricks on me, I think they might have been open for business today, because I drove by there at about five thirty, and there was a man standing inside at the counter, looked like he was ordering food.
I was actually over there today. They're finalizing all of their inspections today, and they are, they're planning probably Wednesday to be open. They're just getting everything finalized, but there are a lot of people in and out.
Yeah. He got the fresh burger.
Okay, thank you very much, Tom. Are there any other reports of officers? Okay. New business, the budget review presentations, Urbana Free Library.
Well, I'm Deborah Lasek, I'm the director at the library, and I'll give you a brief overview of what you saw in your budget packet from the library's request. We did keep a tight budget in keeping with the economic climate and the city's direction. What you'll see is that our non-tax revenues were held fairly constant, even though some of those are gonna probably come in under budget this year, but we just left them there in order to preserve the budget as tightly as we could. In reality, tax revenues represent about eighty-nine percent of the revenue that supports the library, so our non-tax ones are not the significant portion. We kept our centralized costs, which are all of our non-staff and non-materials costs, as tightly as we could. Basically, just looking at vendor estimates and coming in as close as we could, some of those varied from zero to ten percent, but the overall effect was two point four seven for all of our centralized costs, which is, I felt, very good. We gave the same cost of living of three point five percent of the city and the same health insurance increases. Overall, our staff increases went up four point four three percent. This included some phase-in from market adjustments from a salary survey, but that's expected us to, we're expected to take about five years to phase in things, slowly, and it may take longer in this comment, but we did increase a little bit for that. And the only new staffing in this is twelve hours of a week for processing increased materials, which, this is probably the only really big commitment you see in the budget is the materials increase. There's a seven point eight percent increase in our materials budget, and this has been a continuing commitment since we reopened after the expansion, to move our materials as a percentage of budget back to about twelve to fifteen percent. In the early nineties, I'll probably say this over and over again every year till we get there, but in the early nineties, we were about fifteen percent of our budget went to materials, which is the most basic commodity we have for the public. And over those very tight years, when, before the expansion, that percentage went down in our budget, just by necessity, we didn't have the space. So, since the expansion, the board has made a concerted effort to make that the highest priority, and so has the council. We've been averaging about eight percent a year on our materials since two thousand and five. So, in the five years since we opened after the expansion, we've moved back from ten point three percent of budget to now eleven point three percent of budget. So, we're making, we're making progress, and this, of course, is very appreciated by the public. So, I'll tell you a little bit about the remaining unmet needs in our budget, the kind of things we held back on, trying to keep it as tight as possible. It partly tells you, you know, where our pressures are, and also tells you, you know, maybe where we can't make the progress we'd want to in terms of features or services for the public. There will continue to be that emphasis on materials until we kinda get back to what's a reasonable level for the demand in our community, that, you'll see that in coming years also. The things that we left out, other than the materials, are really all staff-related. So, our graphics and web commitment, we have about a twenty-hour-a-week person who does about ten hours graphics and ten hours web, which is a very low amount given the importance of your website presence these days. So, that's something we, we're making an effort to increase the effectiveness of our website, and we've been doing that on a very little amount of money. That's probably a need we have that's greater than we have in our budget. Especially in our case, a website here isn't really just passing you information about the library, it's really access to a lot of our services, so you can read new materials online, you can access databases and find online articles. So, there's a lot of things that we're actually providing services and not just information there. So, that, that's a very important function for us as we go forward, and that's something where we need increased staffing. Our shelving staff, about mid-two thousand and eight, we started functioning with nineteen hours more than we had allocated in our budget, we basically kinda stole it from some turnover. This year, I've managed to move nine hours from the maintenance budget into the shelving budget, but we're still kinda operating with probably ten hours, ten hours a week basically unfunded that we're actually budget, we're using, because we need to, in order to put the materials away. And again, we're managing it because we assume there'll be some turnover, there's gonna be some savings somewhere in the year, so we're getting by, but that's, again, just letting you know, we're using money, that, we're using staffing that we've not funded. Public programming, both committed commitments that we already have, and expansion into new programming is, again, something we're really not funded for in terms of staffing. We do regular things all the time, school district registration, we attend there, we go to quad day, we go to Urbana Park District nights, we go to some school events. So, the places where we interact with the community, a lot of that is actually not designated and funded in our budget, and again, we just rely on the fact that you're gonna come in under budget for some reasons, and we're, we do these. It'd be nice at some point to know that we really had that money solid in our budget, it would give us a little bit more freedom when we're trying to make new inroads to new target audiences, to, to take some other avenues to reach new populations. Public technology assistance is another place where I think we're underfunded right now. Our computer lab is next to the adult reference lab, and those people who, our reference staff have always helped people in the computer lab. The change we're seeing in the last year is that the people who come to the computer lab need more one-on-one assistance. So, we're used to really fast multitasking type of situations, you're answering, you know, three phone lines, and the people walking up to the desk, and you're helping people in the computer lab. We're used to that kinda turnover, and we function very well, but we're seeing a change in what people's needs are in the computer lab. It's probably because of the economy and the loss of jobs, but many people come in who have very low computer skills, so we don't just sit them down on a computer or sign them up. We'll get them started and come back and find they're stuck in the same place. Many employers now require online job applications, and that's the only well that takes. So, when people come in and they haven't really used a computer, they need email to communicate, and they don't have an email, they have never signed up for email yet, they need help doing that, they need help knowing how to use a drop-down menu. So, we're finding that it's a struggle for us to figure out how to adjust our staffing to the kind of need that needs, the kind of need where we need to stay by someone's side more and give more training than we usually do in our very fast-paced environment. So, that's kind of a pressure for us going forward, and that's related, I think, to very many people being out of work and kinda going back into a different world in terms of searching for jobs, one that's a very online environment, and they're, you know, people may have been in their jobs for fifteen, twenty years and never had to face that. So, we're, we're seeing that impact quite a bit, and it has a staff, it has a staffing cost for us that we're just kinda groping with, with our existing staffing. And then, perhaps related to that is, we could use some increased time for staff and service training, and again, mostly related to technology needs, so that if we have a couple people in our reference staff who are really comfortable with all these functions, they can't be there the seventy hours that were open. The other staff who have, you know, some of those skills but not all of those skills have to come to speed, because those are, those are needed when they're, they're on the desk and working. But then, so moving forward, I'll tell you some of the outcomes from our library user survey, which probably last year we mentioned, that we, our board had approved using funds to hire the library research center to do a library user survey, and kinda see where we were touching the right places with our public and where we weren't. Some of the things that came out of it, probably the three most important things were increased materials, parking issues, and longer hours. And then there were a couple other that were pretty equally as strong. So, the ones, you know, where we can act on it, we're starting to, increased materials, especially audiovisual materials, and multiple copies of the most popular and demand books and DVDs. So, like, you don't wanna, they don't want us to have one copy of something, if lots of people want it, they want us to put more effort into multiple copies. Well, because you've been funding our budget materials at about eight percent increase a year, we feel we have the ability to do that just by realigning, and staff have already begun to talk about realigning their budgets into more multiple copies. The second one we've been able to do, as of last week, is the longer loan periods came up, and I think we talked about this a year ago, I think it was, so it did come through in the survey. We were waiting till we had survey response, though we suspected that would come, it did come through. So, as of last week, our loan periods are longer, so books and audiobooks both are at four weeks now, except for the new ones. New ones will remain at two weeks. Educational DVDs and videos went to two weeks also from one week, so those things increased. The only thing that's left at one week now is the entertainment videos and DVDs. And actually, those changed over a year ago, and some people still think they're two days, so those actually changed a long time ago. But four weeks is the basic loan now for books and audiobooks, and I think that will be, it went into effect last Thursday, so it hasn't had a lot of press yet, but already we're getting positive comments about it. So, that's one thing we, we could respond to. The other things that came through with strong public interest are harder for us to respond to. Parking issues came up a lot in the survey, though I will, am very grateful to say, city staff have been really responsive. I've been meeting with Pat Palladie and Libby Tyler and some other people, and we've done some brainstorming among our staff and with city staff, and have a few short-term solutions that I'll be bringing to our board next week, that involve maybe a little bit of increase in parking nearby, or maybe a slightly lessening of meter enforcement, because, of course, the cost in addition to the lack of spaces is a concern. So, we have a few short-term solutions. In the long run, it's always a problem, when we made the commitment to stay downtown with our expansion, it's always a problem that you'll face with your limitation on your room around you. So, that will be a pressure for us, but that was very, a big concern for the public, and it's something we have to pay attention to, because it does affect people's ability to use the library if they come in and they can't park, so. Maybe the longer, the other, the other couple things were longer hours. Friday evenings was the most popular, I was expecting Sunday, but actually Friday evening was more popular, and of course, that has budget implications, so that will be a much longer time before we could tackle that. And more programming, which also is a staff, has a staff component, so there would be a budget implication, but we've had really high success with arts and music programming, and so we're really kinda becoming recognized with that, with this last round, this first round of public art grants, we had so many requests to be a public venue as part of people's applications, because we're already recognized for that now. And we've had a number of after-hours events on Friday that are very family-oriented, the last one was a fairy tale ball, had over a thousand people at it. So, there were a lot of requests in the survey, too, for more cultural programming, more social issue programming. So, going forward, that's something we'd like to respond to, but that also will have budget implications to do more in that area.
Okay, thank you very much. Heather, you have a comment, a question?
Well, I'm very excited about that.
I knew you would be, I remember you wanted that.
I mentioned that last year, and I actually said, I go over to Champaign because I get to keep the books for four weeks.
Well, we hope you come back now. We have four-week loans, and the city's helping us work on more parking, so we hope to have it.
Well, and that's the other question I had. When looking at parking, I often drive by Bucy Bank, and I know that they don't let people park during, or in the past they haven't, I don't know.
They do after four.
But it seems like they have so many empty spots every day, and I just wonder if that's something that could be looked at a little?
Well, the parking belongs to them, and I will say, they have always been very generous about allowing their parking for our patrons after four o'clock. Not just that it's, you know, incidentally there, but they actually allow us to promote that after four o'clock you can use the Bucy lot. So, we can put that in print, and we do have that in print. So, I feel very grateful, I feel very grateful for their letting their spaces go to us. But it is a concern. I think in the survey it came through, you know, for some people, they'll just drive around the block, or look for, you know, keep looking till they find a place, for others, they literally do leave and don't go to the library at that point. I mean, because we did ask what people do when they didn't find a spot, and for some people, that, they actually do leave. And that's something we would like to avoid to the.
Okay, any other questions for Deborah? Oh, Diane?
Having just done a facilities committee, I'm into utilities now, but I was noticing in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight, your actual utility costs were about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and then you budgeted over a hundred and sixty thousand for them this year. Have you actually reached that amount?
No, no.
Was there a reason for that?
Actually, it's, when, do you remember a couple of years ago when there was a projected huge rate increase from Illinois Power? And so, at that time, we and the city made adjustments, I think it really moved, and it was also around the time, you know, we were going to a double the size building, so trying to anticipate what it would be, our utility increase went up a lot that year, to be prepared for that. Well, as it turns out, our building was a lot more efficient than we expected, even though we doubled the size, we did a lot of energy efficiency things in the course of the building. We also, since the building, have done a lot of energy efficiency things in, when the city did the energy audit within the last year, we participated in that and took some of the recommendations from that, and have made adjustments in our HVAC and reducing some of the after-hours lighting, and just a number of, whatever changes we could. So, we've held the line on utility costs, so what you've seen when it moves from one sixty to one twenty is, we end up using that money differently in the budget that year, but then put it back, so that, so you'll see no increase in this year, because we're still running on a surplus budget right there. Where it went instead was to a lot of building projects, things like we are spending another twenty-five thousand this year on some changes to our HVAC system that will introduce more energy efficiency. So, we mid-year then diverted the money, when it looked like utilities were holding, diverted it to building projects that would enhance those things, and then, for the next fiscal year, put that back to utilities, saying, that's really where it belongs if that's where the need comes in. But so far, we've been doing a very good job of holding the line on increases.
Charlie?
Yeah, Diane, just to follow up on that, have the new controls been installed yet, or are they, are they still coming?
They're almost all in. We've, we've added, we've added some controls, this is the twenty-five thousand dollar project I was talking about, we've added some controls that allow us to keep out some of, more of the humid air in the summer, and keep out more of the cold air in the winter. Right now, our dampers have to be open a certain minimum amount to bring in outside air, and the new adjustments we're making have CO2 sensors in them, so we could actually close the dampers totally to, like, hot, humid air, and only when the CO2 trigger, that we need better air quality to bring it in, so that we're, we're not constantly bringing in air that we're in the summer having to cool and in the winter having to heat. So, we have finer ability.
To add to that, Diane, both, we're following sort of the technology that both Carl and, Carl Hospital and the Illinois Terminal followed. Illinois Terminal really was very aggressive about installing controls as new, more sophisticated controls came in to effect, and we originally had those in the original design, but they didn't work the way they were supposed to off the shelf, and, and all those controls have been, were, I guess, disabled to start with, and now they're being replaced with ones that actually function. And I, you know, hard to say how much it'll save, but hopefully we'll, we'll pay back the twenty-five thousand dollar investment in the first year and recoup it after that.
Both of those other businesses felt they saw a lot of energy savings from it, and we actually have two different HVAC systems in our new building and our old building, and Illinois Terminal is similar to our new building, and Health Alliance is similar to our old building, and so we're kinda doing a combination of things in our HVAC system.
Thank you very much. Charlie, would you like to chair? I'm gonna do the next budget.
The mayor will now present the executive portion of the city budget. Executive department, I should say. Page forty-three.
Well, to follow up on what Deb said about the energy improvements at the library, this building was designed with some lights that were always on twenty-four hours. They're, they're wired into the building, so what we're doing is putting some motion detectors in, and they're starting in my office and Jolinda's office, so that we can check it out there. I think we ought to be able to save a lot on the power bill if we can not have the hallways in every office having lights on twenty-four hours a day. So, we're working on that. On the budgets for the executive department, it's pretty much a hold-the-line budget. If you're not familiar with the, with the breakdown, there's the officer of the mayor, there's the administrative officer, and yes, I am working on getting an administrative officer. And the legal department, we have great staff, and I think they've done a lot to bring in money to the city, because we go to court on a regular basis and really pay attention to this. So, Kurt Borman is the one that goes to court, and he's won some pretty big judgments, so I think we're holding our own on that. We have the human relations division with Todd Rint, and he does that, and also the great staff on that. So, as I said, it's a pretty much hold-the-line budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has a question.
Here's your chance to grill the mayor.
Yeah, grill the mayor.
Going once. Heather.
Heather, oh, sorry.
Have you, have you said you're looking at a CAO?
Well, administrative officer, I am recruiting right now. So, I hope to have someone good, but it takes a while.
When we did the interviews for the Chief of Police and the Chief of Fire, we were kind of involved in the interview process. Is that something that we would be able to be involved in?
Definitely.
Okay.
When we, we had the candidate from Indiana, he came and talked with the council, and also with a barrage of citizen groups, which I think was kind of intimidating, quite frankly. But, I will definitely have whoever is my proposed applicant, applicant, talk with the council.
Okay.
And with the citizen groups that interviewed the previous candidates.
Okay.
And, I guess the same sort of question for me is, do you have a timeline yet, or still?
I don't believe in, I'm working on it right now. I have a candidate that I'm working on right now, but I can't give you a definite timeline. I'd like to do it this summer, but you know, if this person doesn't come through, then we might have to go to a recruiting firm.
Okay.
Because we've tried the advertising.
Okay, I guess my question for you is related to the stimulus funds that we're due to receive, which I think you've identified as lighting in general, lighting projects in general. And, before I forget, I did pick up a packet of very interesting lighting in Portland that I need to get to you, just some, I don't know where you are in developing ideas, but there are some really neat technologies out that go beyond fluorescence and even more efficient fluorescence. And, they involve LEDs, of course.
Right, well, when we went to the C-40 meeting in Seoul, Korea, Los Angeles had a represent, you know, a bunch of staff people there, and they have LED street lighting, apparently. So, we're, we're trying to pull that together, but right now, we'd like to hear from you, whatever you have to say.
Yeah, I just, I have it sitting on my buffet at home.
Okay.
To bring in, and I know I'll be bringing it tomorrow night for the Sustainability Committee. I'm gonna bring all of this stuff in, but, but in particular, that packet is for you.
Okay, great.
Any other questions for the mayor? Seeing none, chairs back to the mayor.
The next budget is finance. Ron Eldridge is here.
I really don't have much to say about the finance budget. It's the same budget as last year. There are no new personnel, no new unusual costs, no new services being provided. I'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
Charlie.
I know one thing is coming to fruition, having seen it earlier, I guess, last week, late last week was the redevelopment of the city's website. I'm hoping that that keeps moving forward. I was very pleased with what we saw. I think Brandon was there. And, I hope that has adequate funding for the training and follow-through that's gonna be needed in the coming year to really make that, that work, because it's gonna involve a lot of, and this is, it's gonna involve a lot of staff time, learning the system, and then keeping it, keeping the pages fresh. I mean, department heads and, you know, individuals within departments are gonna have to take ownership of certain parts of the web and, and learn to publish to the web instead of just typing up the memo and sending it out. So, it's gonna be a little bit, change of thinking, and we're gonna need to make sure that we include staff training and so on as part of, of the change to a new, to a new website. So, I don't, I don't know where, where this might be in the budget, just, but I do want to bring that to everybody's attention as we move forward.
Do we have that in the budget?
We have money for the initial training, so that part we can cover. The second part, I think is the harder part, about the change in philosophy, or the change in the way we do business in the web, and that, you know, that's gonna take a while to educate people and get them into that new way of thinking.
Okay, Diane. When will we go live with that? What's the timeline?
All we've got so far is the wire framework of what's gonna go on, you know, what they've put together, and it's gotta also match with the marketing piece. So, we're still a few months away from even some initial design stuff. Well, the, the ideas are there, the, sort of the layout, the beginning of the layout, and now, it's back and forth with staff, and, and the marketing component needs to be worked in, and, and I don't know that they have an exact time. Brandon, do you remember when they thought they'd be back to us?
I think I asked him if they didn't have a concrete timeline at the committee meeting. I don't know if you have a different directive?
I do not have a date to give you, sorry.
Okay, yes, Diane.
I read in the paper about this big broadband, which I actually don't understand completely, but what caught my eye is that they projected Urbana's share would be something like 567,000. Is that something we're facing in the next year, or how likely is that to come up?
Well, I'll take a shot. I'm sure some other people had some, maybe some different influence or different idea about it. If that's our share, I understand it, it will be done over a three-year period, but we really don't have any money allocated for that in this budget document. So, we would either, and we really would not even have enough money in our general savings account to pay that. So, we would probably have to borrow money to do that, that infrastructure. Then, the question is, how do we repay that, that borrowing? And, can we repay that from some of the fees generated from the utility service? Those are some of the questions that are, you know, out there to be dealt into. That answer it? I'm sure there's gonna be a lot more discussion about that in the coming months.
Brandon.
And I think that next Monday, you'll get a chance, we can all get a chance to ask all our questions. I think that Pete Resnick, who's the Chair of Urbana's Broadband Access Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Cable Commission, I think he's scheduled to be here next Monday, June 8, on the agenda, if I'm not correct. The mayor, or somebody could correct me, but I think we've confirmed next Monday that Pete Resnick will be here, so we can ask, ask a million questions, and, yeah, I agree with Ron, from everything I've heard, if, if the grant comes through and the government is gonna give us 80%, we still have to find a way to come up with the local match, and it's not identified yet. We, we'd really be in a pinch to find the funding.
A couple, a couple more note comments about the money. You know, the, the actual match is a lot more than what's been published, because if we're talking about 25 million, and there, you know, we need to come up with like $5 million local match, not just Urbana, but Champagne, Urbana. And, what was mentioned initially was a million and a half or so for Champagne, and a half a million for Urbana. So, that's only $2 million, still looking for another $3 million. And, that was gonna come from other large users, such as the school district, and the hospitals, and places like that. So, you know, someone's gotta go out and convince them to invest this money upfront to get this super-duper internet service. And, people that are doing that, it seemed pretty confident they can do that, and so, maybe they can. That's a question to be seen. The other part of that is for Urbana's share, they have indicated to us that some of the work we've already done, we restarted this project just for, to connect Urbana schools and some of the larger Urbana users. So, we've already spent some of that money, and they've indicated that, yes, that work should be able to use that work there, so that money's not lost, so we theoretically would, would get credit for that as part of our 570,000. So, I don't know exactly how much that would be. Those are some of the details.
I'm interested in knowing if we could have a utility out of it, so that we, we could pay ourselves that way. David.
I've talked a little bit about this with Pete Resnick, and he's, he's, he said that he's getting his show together and getting ready to present to us. And, one of the things I did specifically mention is that this is a, a pretty large egg to swallow, and that, that everyone supports the, the project in principle, but supporting in principle and supporting in capital are two different things.
Well, they say the devil is in the details, so. Yeah, I would say, I would say that, you know, the staff when they issued that, I think had maybe 20 or 25 different questions, and we've met with Mr. Resnick and Michael Metzler, and I think they answered, at least to my satisfaction, they answered a large number of those. So, I was really encouraged coming on, coming on, and I still am. I think it's a wonderful project, and I'm really hopeful that we can work out all, some of these problems, because it's, it could be a terrific, terrific benefit for Urbana.
I think we'll get some, some very serious answers to some very serious questions.
Anything else for Ron Eldridge? Thank you very much, Ron. The city clerk, Phyllis Clark.
Hi, I hope I don't have to move that table.
You can if you want.
I don't want to, thank you.
Stay there, okay. That's wonderful. She's gotta do both.
Well, the city clerk's budget is probably the smallest one in the city, and the only thing that our budget is, 99.9% contractual, so that is something that stays pretty much regular. We don't have a whole lot of money in our budget to change things or to do anything other than supplies and stuff like that. However, there is something that I would like to have you all consider for possibly next year. For the last few years, I've been asking to be considered to get a reader-printer to read our microfiche film that we have in the, in our office from many, many years ago, as the history of the city, from the beginning all the way up until they started dealing with that on the internet, started putting our stuff on that. It's been very difficult to be considered to get a piece of equipment that's going to be able to enable us to do our jobs in the clerk's office more efficiently. We not only need it for our office when we receive requests from citizens wanting things in history from back in the 1800s, we cannot print it out. The reader-printer that we have now is extremely antiquated, the printer doesn't work, we can't actually see the document when we turn the viewing thing on. It's very, very dim, and we can't seem to get it to focus properly. So, I've asked for consideration for the last few years, and it just not has happened yet. We also would share this piece of equipment with the police department, who also has requests for information that's on microfiche, that's many years old. When we get a request and we can't print it, we have to actually call over to the document center at the library to have them to print out what we already have in our office that we can't access, because we don't have the proper equipment. So, if not this year, and I don't think so because of the economy, maybe within the next year or two, we can consider getting a good reader-printer that will be here for the city forever and today.
Any questions for Phyllis? Charlie.
Yeah, how much is such a device? Just so I can put it in my notes here.
Well, the last estimate I got was in 2007, and the price at that time was right at $5,000. They were willing to give us a bit of a discount, but we never got an opportunity to get back to the Kodak people to find out what we need to do with that.
Does it produce an electronic version that you can basically just send directly to your computer, or?
It would actually view the microfiche sheets that we have in our office. And, I'm sure that they've got a mechanism where, instead of printing it out of the printer there, that it could possibly go to your computer to do...
I'm seeing Deb, Deb Lissick from the library.
I'm trying to think if it does that or not, but we actually got a new microfiche printed last year, and the archive was $9,000.
$9,000.
We were looking at a higher level than what you're looking at.
Well, I wasn't looking for one quite as expensive as the one that you got in the library. I did call and talk with them about it, and yes, that one was tremendously expensive. But, the lady that I talked to, I can't think of her name. Yes, she gave me the gentleman's name with Kodak, and when I talked to him, he had one that was under the capability of the one that you have in the library, that would service the needs that we would be able to use here in the city without having to be as expensive as the one that you have there at the library.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, next is ordinance number 2009-06-059, and ordinance approving the annual budget. Are we ready for that? Here's Ron.
I just wanted to bring your attention, if you notice, the tax to the back of that ordinance was the only changes that I know of, and I'm suggesting to you, and those were some increases in the community development block grant. And, I think, but you prob, I think you've already been made aware of these, but, but I think we needed to add into the budget. There was $6,000 some dollars that they got extra, what we estimated, and there was also some additional money for the home program. And, so, that's, I think that's been already amended through the annual action plan, but we needed to show that in the stock.
Charlie.
The issue I have is, has to do more with the, with the items that have gone back and forth. I read more about it in the press until your email today about the recycling of batteries and, and the, and the rain barrels. That, to me, is an unresolved issue. I'd prefer to get that resolved and included in this budget if at all possible. If we can't deal with that tonight, I was prepared to send this to committee to finalize it next week. I know that, that our environmental manager, Rod Fletcher, has indicated that the money's there in his existing budget, or there, you know, it could be allocated from his existing monies. So, I wasn't sure how to work this into the budget, as opposed to, you know...
Okay. Ron, if we amend the budget, it's just a simple majority, right? Or is it a supermajority?
Actually, to amend the budget once it's passed is a supermajority.
Okay.
We can make the amendment now and include it as a simple, you know, that's just a standard amendment, and save ourselves grief if it's something we intend to do. If we need to discuss it, I'm prepared to make a motion to send this committee or to defer it to council meeting two weeks.
I just had a question of whether this company wanted a full year, because it works out to like a $1.60, $62 a pound, I think.
Yeah, and it shouldn't only be about a dollar a pound. It'd be good to know what all the...
So, I thought maybe if they were willing to sign a six-month contract, maybe we could do that instead, and see if there's some alternatives. I didn't, I don't know if I got an answer back from Rod today. I just sent him...
He's out of town today.
Oh, he's out of town, okay. So, I mean, I don't think it's a, it's a huge issue that we should keep the whole budget waiting for that, but, um, it's up to you.
What was confusing, reading about in the paper, was that, or it was an email that he had, I should just bring up the email. It struck me that Rod thought that he had the monies to cover it without any change in the overall budget. That was...
It's in his fund. He has the money in the fund. How much of an appropriation does he have in the fund?
Yeah, he's talking about the, the U-cycle fund, the money that comes from the U-cycle fee that we charge, and that's on page 113. And, over the years, you know, we've, city's been able to negotiate pretty good contracts with the collectors, and it's actually cost less than they originally estimated. And, so, he has, you know, he has built up a fund balance there. It's, you know, we're estimating like $182,000 at the end of this year. Now, we, now we know those contracts are coming up for renegotiation next year, I believe, so we know that's gonna go up. But, that's what he's talking about, that, that he would have money to cover that, at least, I think at least for a couple of years, he'd have money to cover it, and then, who knows with the new contracts, may have to review that. But, that's what, that's what he's talking about.
Well, where would it be? He has residential program, multifamily?
It'd probably just be a new program, battery recycling or...
Would, is that fall under the kind of category that you can just make a real simple transfer without going to the council?
Um, I, I think that...
For $10,000 or $5,000?
Well, I think that should be something the council should... Well, I think that should be something the council should approve. It's really not.
Okay.
I mean, it's really not a part of any of these programs. So, you know, when it comes to creating new programs, that's something I think that you should approve.
Just, if I could just read from what Rod's memo was. It says that, "Since we just recently became aware of the inability of interstate batteries, continue to take batteries at no cost, and of the recent staff initiative in early May to implement a twenty-five-dollar rebate for purchase of rain barrels from either a line AFS or Farm and Fleet, we didn't have an opportunity to recommend funding line items in the budget document. The estimated expenses for these programs are ten thousand for the battery and three thousand for the rain barrels. It's not my recommendation pay for these programs from the general fund, rather to include them in the recycling enterprise fund programs. This fund is projected to have a fund balance of, at June thirty, of a hundred and eighty-two thousand, for which adequate funds exist to fund a total of thirteen thousand for next year. So, it'd be my recommendation to reduce the recycling enterprise fund by this amount for these programs." That's Rod's. And, you know, that would be, you know, I think we could, we could allocate the thirteen thousand tonight, if you'd like, as an amendment establishing these two programs as a line item in the budget. And then, and that gives Rod the leeway. We don't have to necessarily approve the program moving forward. We could just allocate the money and then figure out whether it really is a worthwhile thing and ask Rod to bring us back the details. We'd have to approve a contract anyway and so on. But, at least this way, we'd have the money there in the budget if we need it.
Well, would you want to have like an account for battery recycling and another account for rain barrels?
Yeah, essentially.
Just make a motion then.
Yeah, okay. I would, I would move that we, that we take Rod's recommendation of ten thousand and three thousand, establish two line items in the appropriate.
Fund.
Appropriate fund here, the recycle fund, and then expect Rod to bring us back the, an actual program for appropriate approval.
Is that a second? Okay. So, that would be ten thousand for battery recycling and three thousand for rain barrel?
Refunds, yeah.
Rain barrel refunds, okay.
Rain barrel rebate program through.
Rain barrel rebate program. Okay, is there any other discussion on that? All those in favor of this amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Should we move the two amendments that are, well, okay, so.
Is there another one?
Well, there's the two here. I guess I would move the, I then, I would move the ordinance approving the annual budget, including the two amendments that are listed here by, by Mr. Eldridge. For the CDGG fund and the home fund. CDBG fund, yes, type, CDBG fund on page one twenty and the one twenty-two home fund changes.
Second? Okay. Motion by Smythe, seconded by Stevenson. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mayor Presson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. We just committed ourselves for forty-three million dollars or forty-seven million dollars or whatever, and some change. Okay. Moving along, resolution number two thousand and nine dash oh five dash oh one, um, two-one R. Well, we can't do this one because we don't have the, well, maybe we can do it. The township did it, so why can't we do it? I guess we could too, right? Is there any reason to do it tonight, Ron, or should we wait?
I guess I don't. I don't care as long, if we're passing the resolution that says we're gonna adopt the prevailing rates as established by the state, and I can get those tomorrow.
Okay.
The attorney from the township says that's okay, so.
All right. Is there a motion on this one, then?
So moved.
Motion by Lewis, seconded by Smythe. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. All right, now. An ordinance, ordinance number two thousand and nine dash oh six dash oh five seven, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Urbana, Illinois, the rezoning of seven fourteen West California Avenue from R two, single-family residential, to R seven, university residential.
Thanks. This is a request by Kevin and Julia Webster, the owners of seven fourteen West California. The property currently contains an eight-bedroom, three-thousand-square-foot home, a single-family house. They intend, if the rezoning is granted, they intend to convert it into an eight-tenant rooming house. The house was built in the eighteen eighties. It has been used as a student rental since the nineteen forties. It's been zoned for single-family and duplex zoning. I think that occurred in nineteen fifties. Back then, it was called R one, single-family and duplex zone. So, sometime between the fifties and modern times, it was zoned R two, is the current zoning. In the property maintenance file, there's a zoning administrator determination that determined it to be a legally non-conforming use. It had two apartments plus a four-tenant rooming house, and that was in nineteen eighty-five. And that was the use that it still had in nineteen ninety-seven, when the applicants purchased it. They purchased it, purchased it in nineteen ninety-seven for the use of family members attending school. They invested substantial amounts in renovations into the house. When they applied for the remodeling permit to renovate the house, they wrote, they intended for single-family use, is what they indicated then. Since the permit had that use indicated, it's been issued a certificate of occupancy for a single-family home, and at that time, it lost its non-conforming status. Petitioners were unaware of the long-term zoning implications to their actions, and in attempting to improve the house, they've, they've lost their non-conforming status. So, this rezoning request is an attempt to correct their past unintended action. It would allow a rooming house by right in an area full of non-conforming rooming houses and multifamily units. Looking at the property, it's zoned R two. Surrounding properties east of Bucie are all zoned R two as well. Across the street, there are some higher zones, R four, R five, R six, and R seven. The land uses in the overall neighborhood are mostly single-family, but towards the west end of the neighborhood, where this property is, there's a wide variety of uses, including single-family, duplex, rooming houses, multifamily, and dormitories. The comprehensive plan shows the property as light yellow. It's a residential urban designation. There's also a couple of strategies for neighborhood stabilization in, in West Urbana, right in that area of the comp plan, future land use map. Couple strategies say promote single-family residential uses in areas zoned for single-family and preserve existing zoning protections. The differences between the zoning districts, R seven would allow actually fewer uses, but it would allow more intense uses, including rooming houses and dormitories. And also, R two, the current zoning allows for duplexes, but duplexes are not allowed in R seven. They're currently allowed with a conditional use permit in R two. Lot width and size requirements are the same in the two districts. The houses, or the property is currently non-conforming for lot width and open space ratio and floor area, floor area ratio. If the rezoning is granted, it would become conforming for floor area ratio. Little bit about building codes. It was remodeled under the single-family code. If it was rezoned and they were to pursue a multifamily, or a rooming house status, they would need to conform to the multifamily code, which is a little stricter for exiting and fire requirements. Little bit of discussion, this property is in the West Urbana neighborhood, near the Lincoln Bucie finger, or corridor. There's a high demand for student housing in this area. Many properties have been converted from single-family to multifamily and rooming house. The nineteen ninety downtown to campus plan focused on the area. One of the main objectives of that was protect and preserve the character, scale, and integrity of the established low-density residential areas by discouraging inappropriate and incompatible zoning and developments. And there were several rezonings with the downtown to campus plan, but the subject property had already been zoned R two prior to that. Let's see. The petitioner in their application noted, "The house has been a student rental for fifty years. It's, it's too large for a single-family, and the neighborhood would be undesirable for a single-family. And they are unable to properly maintain such a large property with only being allowed to rent it out to four tenants under the single-family designation it currently has. And that they cannot sell the property because the occupancy limits restrict income potential." So, for rezonings, we look at the LaSalle criteria. I'll just do a quick analysis of these. First criteria looks at existing land uses and zoning of nearby properties. The adjoining properties are mostly R two. There's, across the street, there are the higher zones, but the adjoining land uses are more intense. Lots of legally non-conforming, multifamily, and rooming house uses are very close. Second criteria, the extent to which property values are diminished by the restrictions of the ordinance. The petitioner submitted some information indicating that the proposed rezoning would increase the property's value by around seventy-five percent or so. This reflects high demand for rental housing in the, in the area. Currently, the house can only be rented for occupants, so if it were rezoned, it could be rented to eight tenants, which would increase the income potential for the house. Criteria three and four are the extent to which the ordinance promotes the general welfare public and the relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship imposed on the owners. The nineteen ninety downtown to campus plan and prior zoning efforts pretty much established the community's interest at that time as maintaining a single-family, low-density designation for the area. Let's see. And since then, the downtown to campus plan has been, it's no longer in effect. It's been taken, been incorporated into the two thousand and five comprehensive plan, but those goals still exist. Fifth criteria, suitability of the subject property for the zone purpose. It's a very large home within walking distance of the University of Illinois campus, and the market does heavily favor student rentals in the area. So, it is, it is suited for the proposed district. Although, on the other hand, the parcel is a little small and currently is non-conforming in lot width. So, rezoning would intensify the use of a non-conforming lot. And the final criteria is the length of time the property has been vacant as zoned. The property is, has not been vacant, although it has been underutilized because of the occupancy limit of four unrelated individuals. The plan commission held a public hearing on May seventh about this. The commission discussion focused on how long-range plans designate the area as low-density residential, and yet how this designation conflicts with market pressures to increase density near the University of Illinois. Plan commission noted petitioners are very diligent, hard-working property owners willing to invest a lot in their properties. But, the commission finally asserted that zoning decisions are based on long-term considerations, such as the comprehensive plan and the welfare of the neighborhood. Plan commission voted seven ayes to zero nays to forward case to council with a recommendation for denial. The petitioners are here, and if you have any questions for staff, I'd be happy to answer them.
Brendan?
Yeah, I have two quick questions for staff before we then hear from petitioners and others. First, can you direct me to the official definition of a rooming house?
It's in the zoning ordinance.
Okay. I think I'd like to hear it, just so I have that framework as I'm listening.
Sure. Okay, rooming house. A building where group sleeping accommodations are provided for persons in one room or a series of closely associated rooms with an occupancy capacity of not more than fifteen people, but more than four unrelated people on a regular basis for compensation and by pre-arrangements for a specified period of time under single management. Cooking facilities are to be common. And just to clarify, the fifteen persons is the absolute limit for rooming houses. There, each rooming house is issued usually a smaller limit based on how many rooms they have.
Okay, thank you. And my second question, I think this is an easy one as well. When there is a legally non-conforming use, how many days or weeks must go by when the use is not happening for it to become abandoned? In other words, if I have a legally non-conforming use, a liquor store in my house, and I don't operate the liquor store for a, for a day, or a week, or a month, or a year, I mean, is there any bright-line rule about when I've abandoned my legally non-conforming use?
Yes, there is.
There is? People have asked this question. The whole chapter, okay. Well, I certainly don't intend for you to read a whole chapter, but.
It's like six months? I think it's six months.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Also, Libby Tyler has some more to add to our staff report.
Oh, okay. Thank you both.
I think Brendan, you had asked about, could a certificate of occupancy be reissued? Or could we turn the clock back on this change of events? And I think Mr. Pat had mentioned that as well. There is one way to address that, difficult way, but I did want to clarify that the previously existing certificate of occupancy was for two legally non-conforming apartments and a rooming house. And the occupancy load was for no more than four persons in each apartment, nor four persons total on the second floor. And this is part of our building inspections that are done. So, it's a zoning determination as well as a building code determination. That was back in eighty-five. And then, there was a new one issued in two thousand and four subsequent to the petitioner's improvements. And that use in the new certificate of occupancy is a single-family residence. When, a few months back, the Websters contacted me to talk about their concerns and ways to move forward with our zoning ordinance. We talked about different alternatives, one being possible conditional use permit for duplex, but that would require major modifications. And the course that we thought was most clear-cut and would be permanent would be to request a rezoning to match the desired use, which the desired use is now a rooming house, which is similar to the previous legally non-conforming use. I did consult with Jack Waller at the time, and. I did consult with Jack Waller at the time, and there would be a way to, for the Webster's to, for me to issue a new determination as zoning administrator, rolling the clock back to five years, and stating, so we don't get into statute of limitations, stating this is a single-family residence. They could appeal that. That would be a very difficult appeal, and I feel that the information in the files would make that a real uphill battle, not to mention, well, including the de facto evidence that it is now laid out as a single-family home. The apartment aspects have been removed. And the other would be the intervening lawsuit that we did have with the petitioners, which related to the overoccupancy. So that is, and this is all about preserving the petitioner's rights as well as upholding our plans and policies and ordinances, but that is a possibility. It may not, it would be, could be a very difficult process and may not be satisfactory for either the city or the petitioners. So that is something that we did discuss internally, but for those reasons, the advice was to pursue the more easier-to-understand, easier-to-follow petition to actually set the zoning to match the desired use. So I hope that helps you. We do have, as Jeff mentioned, we do have a number of legally non-conforming uses. The R7 even is a very restrictive zone. There are some existing east of Bucy, but mostly well-south. So this is, it's a balancing act for you all, but I did want to share with you some of that consultation that we had.
Yeah, thank you, that's very helpful. That answers all my questions, I think gives me background. I might have more questions about options when we get into discussion, but this is very helpful background.
Okay, any other questions on this?
I have one. Shirley?
Diane?
Back before you acquired the property, and it was legally non-conforming, that included two apartments plus a rooming house for four tenants, how many people total lived in that?
There were eight.
So two people in each of the apartments plus a rooming house for four?
Well, we didn't know anything actually about the zoning, because we were, this is the first time we had ever owned this type of property.
It was just a group of eight students living in an eight-bedroom house.
Okay.
When we bought it.
There's eight bedrooms in the house.
Shirley?
My question's for Ron O'Neil, which is to, if he could, if he's had a chance to research all this, sort of lay out the legal groundwork of how we've gotten from this, what to me is a weird mix of apartment and rooming house. And given that I live next to a rooming house and have for 20-some years, it's, this is nothing like the rooming house I'm used to living next to, but it's similar in the way the house is cut up. So we have this 1985 determination that we've got two apartments and a four-person rooming house, which is, sounds like three apartments to me, which is sort of strange. Which, that seems to indicate there were three kitchens then, if that's the case. Were there three kitchens originally? There were two kitchens originally. So I'm a little, so I'm confused about the certificate of occupancy that was issued, because you said it was four, four, and four. What was it? You know, two apartments, or one was a four-bedroom apartment, the other was a rooming house? Is that what it is?
Yeah, there were two apartments, and the occupancy limits for those were four persons, and plus there was a rooming house with a specific occupancy limit of four persons.
Okay, so you have apartment, two apartments, but one of them is being used as a rooming house?
No, there's three, three total.
Three total?
Two apartments and one rooming house.
Okay, where's the rooming house then if there's only two kitchens?
I'm not sure how it was set up.
That's, okay, see, I'm, see, that's what's confusing here. How could it be a rooming house and have two apartments with only two kitchens and not three? So that's very confusing. And the way I read through the handwritten note from Bruce Walden at that time, and it was determined to be a multifamily, it doesn't say anything about rooming house, as I recall in that document. So my question is, is...
This is...
I'm sorry? This is multifamily, and the handwritten note is... Currently used as a mixed apartment and rooming house.
This is the designation, this is the officiating.
Okay. Yeah, it sounds like it's one apart, two apartment and rooming house. Yeah, so I think the way, the way I would interpret this, based on looking at pair of them together, is that one was used as an apartment and one was used as, there are two units, one was used as an apartment, and one was used as a rooming house, which seems sort of strange. I noticed this rules. Two apartments and a rooming house. How could, but what I'm saying is, how could it be two apartments and a rooming house if there are only two kitchens? That doesn't make sense. So Ron, can you sort of run through the legal, the whole legal...
I want to clarify what, you just brought up a lot, I want to clarify what your exact question is.
My question is, is what was this in 1985? What was given up in 1998 by the new purchasers when they remodeled? And, and, you know, it, you know, is my interpret, you know, basically, I need to understand this, it's two apartments and a rooming house, but if it's only got two kitchens, then it can only be one and one. And it's two apartments where one apartment's being used as a rooming house, that would, that would sort of make sense. But, which seems like an odd sort of thing. Like I said, it's different from the other rooming houses, these other non-conforming things in the neighborhood. So, so I, you know, I don't know how much you've had a chance to review all of the...
I've had some. There's a, there's a lot that's been going back and forth, and I've had an opportunity to read some of it. I have not gotten into the analysis of the zoning, the underlying zoning issue, and the loss of the non-conforming use. Right now, there are three files on this. One that was already in Legal Division's files, one looking at some of the paperwork that Community Development had, and one that I've generated just to capture the things that have been going on.
Okay, so let me ask this question then. Do you need time to figure all this out?
Yes, that's the net-net of what I was trying to say.
Net of what you're saying.
I would need some time to vet what is going on, given the question that you've asked.
Okay.
Sure.
The mayor will recognize. I get, okay, so I'm going to shut up for now, but I have like five different points I'd like to make at some point, either now or later.
And if, may I just add too, if any of you, if any of the other council members have further questions, email them to me as soon as you can, so that I could put them into the analysis of the memo that I'll probably end up writing.
Okay, Robert Lewis?
I'd like to move this to the next committee of the whole, so we have time to assess the legal ramifications of this case, so that we all understand what's really going on. When I look at this, this map, it's confusing, and when you talk about the individual house in this maze of convoluted whatever, it's kind of difficult to understand. And I think we need a better understanding, yet we have, could we ask staff to do so for the council?
Brandon?
Yeah, I support that concept too. We definitely want to take time to make sure we let staff in CD and legal have time to answer questions and make sure we all understand the case, because it is complicated.
Are you seconding the motion?
I would second that with one comment, that I would ask that we do recognize the petitioners this evening, and allow the public input time since they came out and have waited to at least begin to hear some of those facts, even though you're right, we may not get to discuss and resolve this one tonight.
Okay, would you like to say something?
Yes, well, first of all, in regards to, Mr. Smythe was asking about, apparently the house, back in the 50s, I would say, an older lady lived in the house, and she had the top floor, the third floor, and that was her domain. There was a, there was a kitchen up on the third floor, and a large living area and a bedroom. So that's probably where the...
Third kitchen.
Well, no, there was only two kitchens. That's all there was.
How, how, how did you find the house?
The house had been donated to the University of Illinois, I don't remember by whom it was, and then the university went, turned it around and sold our house and the two properties right next to us.
How was it carved up?
It was not carved up.
Well, except the other kitchen we took out.
Okay, besides the kitchen, okay. The kitchen was on the third floor. There was a, there was a large room, which we took the kitchen out and made it into a bedroom.
So the other kitchen was...
That is correct. And it is, we have a full kitchen, a living room, we have not, everybody keeps talking about chopping it up, but we have a full living room, full dining room, there was, there was a parlor there that was existing, but that was already used as a bedroom when we bought it. And then there's four bedrooms on the second floor. So we've got, we've got a bedroom, two bedrooms on the first floor, four bedrooms on the second floor, and two bedrooms on the third floor.
Brandon? Okay, go ahead. He wants it repeated for his...
We have, we have two bedrooms on the first floor, four on the second floor, and two on the third floor.
And do you have a kitchen on the first floor and the third floor?
No.
Just one kitchen?
We took out the kitchen, and that's...
So there's only one kitchen now?
That is correct, and that is, that's where the problem came in, because that is where we lost our duplex part of it.
Kitchen's on the first floor, right?
It was the kitchen on the third floor that you took out?
Correct.
Okay.
I was wondering, I don't know if we actually gave you both a chance to introduce yourselves, but if you could do that and just maybe start at the, at the beginning and give us the brief version of your story and what you've done with the house since you purchased it.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kevin Webster, this is my wife Julie. We, we, the house was built in about 1880 as a three-bedroom, or, sorry, a three-story home with a full basement. The house is nearly 130 years old. In 1905, the water was brought into the residence, and the first indoor bathrooms were installed. About 1940, the owner applied for, to the University of Illinois to use the house as a student home. Prior zoning maps indicate that the property was zoned B, multifamily residence, in 1940, but rezoned R1, one and two-family residence by 1950. Records show that the property contained at least two units and three bathrooms as early as 1953. In 1985, the zoning administration determined the property to be legally non-conforming, multifamily slash rooming house. We purchased in 1997 with our intent to create a single-family atmosphere, wherein the eight tenants would learn to live with each other like they did at home growing up. We wanted them to learn to adjust, to become friends, and to hopefully be friends for life. And I can say that our niece, who lived there for two years, met and later married a tenant of our house. By, by 97, when we looked at our house, when we were looking for something, we saw it was in sad shape, but we could see the potential, and we could see what it must have looked like when it was built in 1880. The kitchen was deteriorating, the one on the third floor was, was a mess. The roof was a mess with four layers of shingles and shakes, with rotting framing, bricks in desperate need of tuck-pointing. The front porch was full of ants and ready to collapse, paint was flaking off, the toilets were about ready to fall over and make their residence in the floor below. Plumbing was so bad that if you opened the faucet on the first floor, and you then opened the faucet up on the third floor, all you'd hear was hissing air. It was bad. The hot water pipes were insulated from newsprint from October 1929. We still have pieces of it. That's, that was when the crash was. We had knob and tubing wiring, the cistern had only a piece of rotting plywood covering the access hole, and the list goes on. We applied for permits, unknowing that by doing so that we would lose our legally non-conforming status. We should have done what other landlords did and do for fear of losing their non-conforming status and not have applied for permit. But we were young and eager, and we liked to do things right. We wanted a nice place for our children who were going to be attending school in the fall. So we got our building permit in 1998, and proceeded to completely renovate the house from top to bottom. We replaced the roof, it's multiple layers of shingles, replaced the plumbing in its entirety, installed gutters, installed concrete curbing, new apron, both to California and Bucy, built the new front porch, installed a 200-amp fuse panel, installed new wiring throughout, CAT 5 Ethernet to each room in the house, stripped the paint off the old wood and repainted. We filled in the cistern, and the list goes on. I actually fell through the cistern, and it was one of the first things we did, was close that thing up. Our children graduated from U of I, and we decided to keep the house because we had grown so attached to it, and that it would make a great supplement to our retirement. We continued to rent to eight students. Now, in 2004, six years after the permit was issued, the building department finally wanted to close out the permit, which we had asked for numerous times in the past. When the inspector came to inspect, the only thing he wanted was to know how many people lived there. And we told him us to square one. If eight would be acceptable to them, why then can't we have eight legally? Is there no provision for limiting the R7 status to eight? I'm on the spot. The City of Urbana illegally abandoned our legally non-conforming status when they purposefully accepted our naive attempt to make the upgrades to the house. City of Urbana is actually encouraging the downgrade of our neighborhoods by not allowing good landlords to fix up their rental properties. Get a building permit, and you're screwed. There goes your legally non-conforming status. Therefore, do not fix up your property, the city does not allow it. We are not trying to downgrade our neighborhood, as some of the Wuna people think. We are not slum lords. We are not evil people whose only intent is to squeeze as much out of a piece of property until there is nothing left. We have spent quite a bit more than most of our single-family neighbors in fixing up the neighborhood. We opened up our house today and personally invited people from Wuna and people from the city council to visit. Regretfully, only one person did visit. If we're not allowed to rent to eight students, we'll be forced to stop all further... If we're not allowed to rent to eight students, we'll be forced to stop all further renovation. In a few years, it could be back to where it was before we got there and rescued this beautiful house. Then the city and Wuna would be getting exactly what they wished for, another tumbling down wreck. It could never sell as a single-family residence. What family with a need for eight bedrooms would want to live one block from campus? We are asking that our property be rezoned to R7 with the stipulation that there be no more than eight tenants. And if that is not an option, we want to be returned to our legally non-conforming status, which we had when we purchased the house. Thank you.
Brandon?
Yeah, thank you both. I had a couple of questions. I just wanted to make sure I understood, contrary, I think, to what Ms. Pat said earlier, it sounds like when you purchased it, it was being used as a rooming house with eight people at the time of purchase.
That is correct.
And then you did this remodel and then you rented to four people, am I correct, for a while?
Well, four, five, depending on how many friends our kids had.
Okay. And during that time, do you consider that the use was as a rooming house, that there was a communal kitchen or those things?
There's a communal kitchen, communal living room, dining room, billiard room. We've got a loft. It's all open to all the, all the kids.
Right. So to some extent, you feel like it could be, could be considered that you had it as a rooming house sort of the whole time?
Right.
You never, you never sort of abandoned that use of, an operation as a rooming And to understand the notice piece, it sounds like, if, if I understand correctly, you didn't know that when you got that certificate of occupancy and, and applied for the building permit, that that was gonna abandon the use and it was six years later?
We had no idea.
Okay. Okay, I think that's my questions for now. Thank you.
Julie.
Yeah, my questions are really more directed at the staff here because I think I now understand what the real question we need to be asking is. You know, I was involved in the 1990 zoning changes to the neighborhood. There were a number that were done, this side, that side, down Green Street. It was, you know, basically trying to establish, reestablish a border to preserve a very prominent, very well-loved neighborhood, the Westerbanna neighborhood, and, which, which being pushed on with a lot of pressure from these, these 1940s rooming houses all over. I live next to a 1940s rooming house. Same kind of thing, an elderly couple, they started taking in tenants and, except that in this case, it's, you know, they converted the basement, they converted the attic, the whole bit, you know. A house that's basically my size has an occupancy of like 15, which is pretty absurd. And so, so the issue to me is, is one of, of having allowed these conversions in the first place, the basements, the attics, removing the parlors and so on. You know, this is probably originally a five-bedroom house, one bedroom on the first floor with a parlor and a living room and four bedrooms on the second floor. The attic is, is an addition. And, you know, taking out the parlor to put another bedroom. In some places, they, you know, partitioned up first floors and, and made them into multiple bedrooms. I know a house in our neighborhood where they put, where they did the same sort of thing. They divvied up the first floor and made it into all, all, you know, no, no, no living room, no nothing. They just made it all bedrooms and a kitchen. You see that kind of thing. And, and that was an illegal conversion and they were forced to remove it all. That was a number of years ago. So the real question to me is, and this legal is gonna, need to go back, is, is whether the Websters actually lost their rooming house grandfather. Okay, it's clear they lost the duplex part, but in the certificate of occupancy, now that I understand it, which says, okay, this is a mixed-use apartment slash rooming house. Okay? And, and, you know, two apartments and this rooming house aspect. So it's clear that in pulling out the kitchen, the second kitchen, they lost the duplex. But my question for legal is, did they actually lose the grandfathered rooming house aspect?
This is really a building safety and community development zoning question. And right now, this is a zoning hearing for rezoning. But you're asking a lot of specifics about code determinations made in community development over many years, which I have researched and spoken with the staff. And there's other, there's a lot of evidence presented regarding these building safety decisions. We have not provided counter evidence, which we might do in a hearing or in a subsequent case. One of the aspects that I think is important is, under what code were those improvements made? And these improvements that the Websters made were under a single and two-family residential code. That allowed Mr. Webster to do a lot of the work himself. He's a general contractor and it also allowed them to do the work for the conversion without getting, for example, outside electrical or, you know, just, there are certain provisions you can do under the single and two-family code and for owner occupancy that you can't for commercial use like a rooming house. So remodeling for a rooming house would have triggered a different, higher code would have been more expensive. So this was a trade-off back many years ago on the building code that was used, and we have evidence in our files. Now, it could be argued, do, did they understand the zoning implications of that? And I do have a letter from 1998 from Mr. Webster stating that our plan for the home, and it submits all the plans and it was under the single, all the permits are under single-family residence, one and two-family residential code. And he states, our plan for the home after August 15th, this is April 1998, is that our two college-age children will live there along with three of their friends. We would like to reconvert the house to a single-family residence. And so this was part of the discussion back then on the type of code. And there, there was communication about over occupancy way back. And then there was an inspection and a complaint and more recent concern about over occupancy for the five individuals. And that did go to court. So I think we have a lot of things going on here. We have occupancy, which they're compliant now, and they did lose that case with the city a year or so ago. We have the codes that were used between 1998 and 2004 and the decisions that were made, knowing or not. And so there's a lot of evidence that could be found. But I think what you have before you tonight is a rezoning case and those criteria. This is background that's, that's being introduced and maybe can help you understand how we came to where we are tonight. And maybe you will have recommendations as counsel for how to proceed. But I hope that gives you a little more background.
But what you're saying ultimately is that there are two separate issues going on here. One is a zoning case, which needs to be determined on its merits, which is why the Plan Commission, I think, if you read through all their notes and whatever, came to the recommendation that the rezoning be denied. And a separate issue of what, what the, of how the grandfathered aspect of this house was lost, which is the zoning, or which is the community developments, how'd you put it, the, the health and safety aspect of, of all of this.
And so the second is something that's gonna require, to really delve into that, it's gonna require some organized evidence gathering, probably a good hearing by the proper hearing body to go through that, whether it's in court or the zoning board of appeals. This is not what you have. It's other information being, being introduced.
So what you're saying is we really should decide the zoning aspect of this separate from any other determination?
I think you need to do that if you have recommendations separate or suggestions. Certainly, that's always helpful, but, you know, I think tonight you have the zoning case and...
Yeah, see, originally, as I thought about this and, and, you know, I've got a number of issues that, that I was gonna raise here, but to me, it is an underlying zoning case. It is spot zoning. There are lots of other examples of, of grandfathered properties through the community. It doesn't exist just in, in the Westerbanna neighborhood. It doesn't exist just west of, or just east of Bucie Avenue, though that is where a large portion of these grandfathers exist, grandfathered properties exist. But ultimately, it does become one of, of spot zoning, which, as Esther points out, would be opening the door to a lot more of these sorts of requests. And so for that reason, that reason alone, I would argue that we should just simply take a vote up or down on the zoning aspect of this and send the rest of this off to staff. I would prefer to go along, you know, to agree with the, what the Plan Commission has done, recommending the denial, and then ask that staff research and work with the city attorney to see if there is further recourse to figure a way out of the situation short of a rezoning.
Is that a motion?
Well, no, we already have a, I'm, I'm speaking against sending this to committee.
Oh, okay. We didn't vote on that one.
Yeah.
Sorry. That was a while back.
Yeah, well, and rightly so. There is, there isn't, there's a, yeah.
Heather, did you have a statement?
Libby, remind me again, who on staff is part of the Plan Commission?
There's no staff members on the Plan Commission. It's similar to the city council, which just provides support. So we have seven council, I think there's, yeah, there's now seven council-appointed, mayor-appointed, council-approved members of the Plan Commission.
Okay.
And they held the hearing, that they do hearings on rezoning. So they held that hearing about a month ago.
Okay, so aside from the Plan Commission, what's, what would staff's recommendation be?
We did have a recommendation, and I think Jeff outlined somewhat, but our recommendation to Plan Commission was to recommend denial of the rezoning on the basis of the larger implications for the Westerbanna neighborhood and specifically in the comprehensive plan it talks about promoting single-family uses in this area. However, we did, did do a very balanced memo and pointing out some of the particularities of how this case came forward.
Thanks.
Brandon?
Yeah. This is a complicated case and I don't know quite whether I'm ready to take a vote on pieces of it tonight or to stick with the motion of, of taking more time. What I think would be the best is for some creative solution to this case. The way I see it, after having seen the property today during the open house, is that the owners have actually done a huge amount to contribute to rehabbing this historic home and to contributing to the health, safety, the welfare of this neighborhood, on, on the one hand. And at the same time, I can't support the rezoning to R7. Just the particular rezoning that's before us, I don't support because it, on its merits, fails, but also because it's, opens the door to everybody saying, well, yeah, I wanna upzone every property. But, but the fact that this home is, is not cut up, like, you know, when I, when I went in this home, it's not one of those houses, like, a long time ago, I was dating somebody who lived at 504 West Elm, right? It's one of those homes that when you walk in, every room is tiny. You can see that there's been drywall put up in random places and the whole house is carved into as many rooms as possible, 15, 20. This is not one of those properties. The original rooms and structure of the house are intact. The, there's a lot of shared space. It's, it's sort of a communal living environment and the house has been tastefully restored in a way that contributes to the neighborhood. As, as, you know, as we heard testimony about the crime and all of those things, that does not get police calls, they carefully pick tenants. So if there's some way, despite the fact that I can't support the rezoning, the upzoning, some way that we can creatively figure out how to allow the legally non-conforming use, to reissue the certificate of occupancy, something, some creative solution, that seems to me the solution that lets this home continue to be of benefit to the neighborhood without upzoning it permanently in a way that sort of opens the floodgates and, and doesn't meet the criteria. So I'm okay with taking another week or two to at least have discussions about what the options are in the case. I, I don't support the rezoning, so if there is a vote called on it, I would vote, vote no on the upzoning from R2 to R7. But I hope that we can have some more conversations about some of the specific options for the property.
I have a question, Libby. It seems like we have the issue of the zoning. If people wanna find some other solution, that is not going to involve the zoning, right?
It could be more of a interpretation or an appeal of an administrative decision. So I think your zoning, you still want to stick with your LaSalle criteria and the evidence sent forward by Plan Commission and provided tonight.
So if we, if we vote to deny the zoning change, that does not close the door to coming up with some other solution?
That's, that's correct.
Anyone else have a question? We have a, Charlie?
I was just gonna restate the motion, which is that...
Okay, there's, there's a motion by Robert Lewis, seconded by Brandon, to move this whole question to the committee of the whole next week. But it's just, the question before us is the zoning question.
Right. And what I'm saying, okay, I'll just reiterate, is if people really want to look at this in its whole, without splitting it, zoning and the rest of the stuff, and send it all to committee, that's fine with me. If people are comfortable with voting on the zoning and, and sending the other piece off, that's, that's more where I'm at.
David?
I'd be more inclined to, to take a, take more time on both pieces of it and consider them together because there's, there's a reciprocity between the two. I think that I'd rather see them considered together because you gotta stick with the reciprocity. And so I would also recommend that we move this to the committee of the whole.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on this motion? Oh, Diane?
Just for the record, I think the zoning aspect of this is pretty clear and I'd be prepared to vote on that tonight, but I'm willing to look at a creative solution. But the zoning, to me, is very clear.
Okay. We have a motion to move this to the committee of the whole. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Well, shall we have a show of hands? Those in favor of moving it to the committee of the whole? One, two, three, four. All right, that carries then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Finally, the audience has been waiting for this one. Ordinance number 2009-06-058, an ordinance approving a special use permit to allow the establishment of a church in the R3 single and two-family residential zoning district. 1701 North Carver Drive, Church of the Living God.
All right.
Jeff Engstrom.
This is a request for a special use permit in the R3 district. Churches, temples, and mosques are allowed only with a special use. Council has seen this special use permit twice before and they've granted it twice before in 2002 and 2005. Those special uses expired one year after they were granted, so they're back with their third and hopefully final site plan. The church is currently located a couple of blocks from the site, over on Fourth Street in Champaign. Their current facilities are not adequate and they wish to offer some more services to the community. The 11-acre property is on the western edge of the city, accessed off of Federal Drive. The church currently owns 25 acres adjacent to the sites, all within the city of Champaign, which they plan to develop as a residential neighborhood after developing their new church. Look at the sites. It's... Surrounding properties are mostly vacant to the east, west, and north. There's one industrial property in the north, and to the south, it's mostly single-family residential in the city of Champaign. The site plan is very similar to previously-approved site plans. There'll be a church building and a parking lot built in the first phase, and it'll take about 18 months. Then there'll be a youth facility/fellowship center, all in one building, to be built in Phase 2. The buildings will all be set back at least 50 feet. Only vehicular access will be off of Federal Drive in order to alleviate neighbor concerns about excessive cars going through the neighborhood to the south there. There will be a potential new vehicular access to the west when that area is developed as residential. Let's see, and there will be pedestrian access off of, from the south, off of the existing neighborhood as well. The site meets all development requirements for parking spaces, for shade trees. It'll be screened from adjacent residences. They have a drainage plan that will have to be approved by the city engineer. They'll have to have a landscape plan showing species approved by the zoning administrator in consultation with the city arborists. The criteria for an SUP, one is it conducive to the public convenience in that location. Analysis says yes, it is. It'll provide space for worship on a vacant lot, kinda provide a buffer between the residents and the industrial uses to the north. Number two, the site will not be unreasonably detrimental to the district. Vehicle access only from the north, not through the residential area, and the screening will be provided. Third criteria, will it preserve the essential character of the district? Yes, it will. Churches are generally compatible with residential areas, and it will meet all the development regulations for the R3 district. Plan Commission held a hearing on May 21st and voted to recommend approval with the listed conditions, and staff recommendation is for approval as well. And they're here tonight.
Charlie?
Oh, yeah, I have no problem with this, but I was hoping Chief Dillak could remind me what the answer was the last time I asked this question, which was sufficient fire access. I asked it of your predecessor, which was about four years ago when we saw this last time. And is it that in an emergency, fire trucks could actually get up through the pedestrian access if they had to? I'm trying to remember.
I haven't seen the plan, so I can't appropriately answer it, but access off of Federal is what I understand would be our access.
Yeah, and that's, and it's pretty close to the fire station anyway, so...
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I know you guys like to have two ways into any property. So that's why I'm trying to remember exactly what the width was there. I mean, if it puts a barricade up in the middle of the sidewalk, clearly you're not gonna get through, but...
Yeah. It doesn't show the plan for parking. I'm assuming they'll have parking on surrounding the building that would also give us access, is that correct?
Yes, the, yes, to the north and south of the building.
Yeah, so we had access to three sides anyway, which would be appropriate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'd move approval.
Second?
Okay, any other discussion?
Could I speak to my second?
Yes, please.
We've seen this. Reverend Lloyd's here, along with, it looks like quite a few of his congregation. And I have a question, what are we gonna do about the Love Corner? That's what everyone calls it, hello? Are you gonna have to do something about putting something so it can still stay the Love Corner, right?
Well, we'll call it the Love Center, that's what we're thinking.
Okay, great, okay. All right. Well, thank you for all your...
Thank you so much.
Sorry to keep you waiting so long.
We're gonna actually bill this time. It's been a long time coming. We're really excited about it, and hopefully by midsummer, we should have our groundbreaking. And I heard one of the officers, the staff, say tonight, it was a lot of shovels and a lot of work going into that groundbreaking. And I thought to myself, I made a note, call the city of Urbana, tell them we're gonna have a lot of shovels.
All those in favor, please signify...
That's an ordinance.
This is an ordinance, yes, that's correct, you're right. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Sorry to keep you waiting so long.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a closed session.
Can we take care of it?
Property acquisition issues. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion, we go into closed session for discussion of property acquisition issues. This is pursuant to five of the Illinois Consolidated Statutes, 120, 2C5.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Oh, no, a roll call again. Would the clerk please call a roll? Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mayor pressing?